Good evening. Welcome to the regular city commission meeting of November 20th. Call the meeting to order and ask all of you to write in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any flags?
Just to make sure.
I'm mistaken.
Two U.S. flags.
I know, it's nice. Must've been left over from the election, but I don't know why.
Okay, our first item is approval of the agenda. There are copies of the agenda available at the back of the room as well as on the recorder's desk. Any other motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes of the special meeting of October 23rd and the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the minutes of our October 23rd special meeting and regular meeting.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Communications, we have none as far as I know. Brings us to our county commissioner. Commissioner Zach is here with us this evening to update us.
Good evening. First of all, I haven't seen you since the election. I want to thank the voters who voted me in for my ninth term. I really feel very privileged and honored to be here. Couple of things. This Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and along with other initiatives, Oakland County has added on a contest for those that are making purchases by shopping local. So what you do is you purchase an Oakland County small business, and then you can text to 4141, shop text win, you text shop text win, to receive a link to a shopper registration page, and you follow the instructions. And if you're confused, you can also look at advantageoakland.com/shop-small, and that will give you details. And I'm going to leave this here in the City Hall in some flyers if people want to check it out. But you can get there, what you can do, you can win up to $5,000, $2,500 prizes by participating in this. So, I think it's a nice benefit for all of us. A week from this Friday, there is a very new, exciting program happening. It's the Michigan Manufacturing Day, and there are 4,500 Oakland County students going to this event, the Suburban Collection. 10,000 students in total. And they're going to be introduced to four different types of job career potentials. It's a two-hour segment, and they will be able to talk to different industry experts, such as food service, manufacturing, technology. They've done this, I think, for four years on the west side of the state, and this is the first time that we're doing it in Oakland County, in this area. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to build more skills and jobs. I learned about a newer program that we have going. Obviously opioid issues are a big deal around here, and within our jail system, we started a newer medication assistant treatment program in February. And this program, anybody that enters the jail is screened, they go through a questionnaire. And for those people, there's 24 people that are allowed into this, you know, medication treatment program. And they're teaching them cognitive behavioral therapy skills, there's peer counseling, and some other support. And this is really to help people, particularly for opioids. So I'm glad to know that we have that. We have other treatment readiness programs already. I also want to let you know that there, we are reorganizing how we do county business. This is a new opportunity. We are restructuring our committees to make our government, our Board of Commissioners, stronger and more efficient. For example, there are approvals that will go through three committees, and our staff have to, you know, prepare paperwork for three committees. It doesn't make sense to do that. So we're looking at how do we reorganize? And we're also reorganizing into new committees that make sense for today's priorities. So I'm really excited about it. I was on a subcommittee that came up with some new committee structure, and I'm also looking forward to the fact that I'll have the opportunity to chair a committee. I don't know exactly what committee, I suspect it's going to be Finance, which is good for me, you know, I'd be very happy and honored to do that, but I have to be elected. I also will have a greater voice when it comes to countywide appointments, and I will bring you, you know, bring back lists of those appointments as they arise, so we can get some more South End representation onto things like parks and recreation, public transportation, bring back, we used to have an appointee, Alex Alley used to be our appointee to the Zoo Authority, that was taken away from us, but there will be opportunities when we can strengthen our representation through appointments. So, I will keep you posted. Any questions? Yes.
Who's your new chair?
So, we did elect our leadership. Dave Woodward is now the Board of Commissioners Chair, and Marcia Gershenson is his vice chair, and they were our caucus chair and vice chair. And then Gary McGilvray is the, is our caucus chair, and Janet Chekson's the vice caucus chair. And I did not choose to go for any leadership. I'd rather work on committees, and I have some projects that I hope to achieve in the next couple of years. One on being affordable housing, and how we spend our parks and recreation dollars different ways. So I hope to be able to do something different on that.
Congratulations on your reelection, and I echo your comments. I think county government, all government, operates best when there are checks and balances in the process, and I think we will now have that. And I look forward to those changes, and especially the committee appointments that you mentioned are so important, that the South End now will have some representation on things like parks and recreation and the zoo.
Have more.
Yes.
Rather than just one appointee, we can start shaping some of these things.
You got it.
I think for the first time in my career, I'll have an opportunity to vote on a road commissioner. I've never voted for a road commissioner in my 16 years, because we've never really gone through what I feel is a fair interview process to interview somebody with credentials versus it being a political appointment. So we'll have an opportunity to do that as well, so.
Halleen, how does the road commission, how is it structured?
So there, the road commission is a separate operating unit of government. And what we do as the Board of Commissioners, we appoint, they have three appointed road commissioners, and they are paid a salary, I think $15,000. They used to have cars, I don't know if they are, I don't know if they still get medical insurance. And the Board of Commissioners appoints those people. And generally, the appointments come before me on the meeting in January where I get sworn in. And one of the things that we fought for years ago is, we did a resolution saying, we want to interview candidates for appointments, we don't want to just rubber stamp. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't. And so hopefully, you know, we're going to do a screening process and get somebody with some engineering and different types of skills, someone that looks different, you know, comes from the South End, you know, that sees things differently. I think it's going to be really positive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public participation, now's the time for the public to address the commission on a non-agenda item. Seeing none, public participation is closed, and we'll move on to our presentations. Hello.
I just want to take a few minutes to talk about teen council. This November, a few teen council members had attended the Michigan Youth Symposium. The speakers at the symposium talked about mindfulness, equality, inclusion, and diversity. All members that attended also got to learn, like, a lot about leadership skills, and hopefully they can bring that back to the council. We have a few upcoming events. We have Moon Beams for Sweet Dreams at Belmont. That's the event where a group of just community members go to the, like, children's section of the hospital and shine lights up at them, and I've heard they really enjoy that. So we're going to bring a group there on December 13th. The Mini Lead Workshop on November 29th, that's the training for new teens, so that they're able to volunteer at different parks and rec events and help even more with teen council. Adopt a Family from Children's Hospital, that's our community service project, that's where we get a family and we get to, they give us a list of, like, gifts and stuff that they would like, and we try to, like, raise money or buy those gifts for them. Also, we have our Noodles &amp; Company Restaurant Night coming up. We don't have a date for that yet, but it's a fundraiser for the council, and it helps us do more events or get T-shirts and all this stuff. It's, it's really fun, and it really does help us. You can look for, like, date updates and stuff like that on flyers and on our social medias. Our Teen Years Program have two events coming up. The Teen Years Program is Teens and Seniors, which I think is important, because those groups don't often mix that much. So we're going to be playing pickleball on February 19th, which is a brand-new event, and then we're going to be holding our annual Teen Years Bingo on March 14th. We're also going to be learning how to play euchre on December 9th at the Rec Center. That's a popular game, I don't think a lot of kids know how to play. So, and then on January 25th, we're going to Detroit to taste both Lafayette and American Coney Island, and we're going to decide for ourselves which ones are better. And then we have our annual sock drive coming up. We compete with other local teen councils, it gives us a little competition and doing something good. The winning council gets very important bragging rights. Last year we came in second, and Howell came in first. Like, socks are one of the most requested items at homeless shelters, but also one of the least donated items. So it's really important that we work hard, we accept donations from outside as well as the teen council. So, and then you can look for our Santa event in December and the Daddy Daughter Dance. I'm not sure when the Santa event is, but the Daddy Daughter Dance is on January 18th. And then, we're starting something new, we're going to try to have a teen council newsletter, where we, like, inform teens around the city through that about teen council, like, different events that might be coming up, or trying to catch up with, like, some alumni who have been in the program and see how, like, see their life and what it's like after teen council. We haven't started that yet, but I think I'm going to be in charge of that, and we're going to try to make it really cool and informative for everyone. And then if Huntington Woods teens, grades six through 12, want to be involved with teen council, we would absolutely love to have them. You can email Tracy@TShanley@HWIM.org and leave your contact information. Being on the teen council is one of the most rewarding parts of my high school and middle school career. It has, one, helped me make new friends, gain leadership experience, and it also helps on, like, college applications. But most of all, like, it's a really good way to get teens involved in their community and learn how to, learn to gain skills that they can bring into later in life. Our meetings are usually the first and third Thursday of every month, unless it's like a holiday or a school break, and they're at 7:00 P.M. And everyone on the city commission is invited to attend a meeting if you'd like to see, like, how we run things. And, yeah.
Thank you very much. Just so everyone at home listening, introduce yourself for us.
My name is Erica Hurley, and I'm on the executive board.
All right, and where do you meet on the first and Thursday?
At the Rec Center, the warm-up room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for coming in and keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing. This is a matter of receiving public comment on the proposed use of $9,350 allocated to the city of Huntington Woods under the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2019.
Staff is recommending that we take the maximum amount of money that we can, it's a 30% allocation from our $9,350 and dedicate it toward transportation for the senior bus driving program. And then the balance of the money needs to be used on areas that are low-income or to make things ADA compliant. We haven't identified any projects this year, so we're recommending that that money be turned back to the Oakland County Home Improvement Program, which is a program for low-income residents, which Huntington Woods residents may use if they meet those requirements for necessary home repairs.
Any comments or questions or other suggestions from the public? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the regular items of business.
The commission is not allowed to comment?
Not until the next, the first item of business, and you will be able to. Yes. Item number one is a matter of authorizing the allocation of the 2019 CDG funding. Do we have a motion to approve the staff's recommended?
As it pertains to the use of the funds for senior transportation?
For both.
For both. Well, I have a question about this allocation. It's, I'm only asking if it's feasible. Can any of these funds be used with regard to the parks? I'm speaking in particular of Balfour. I spoke to a resident a while ago about some of the play equipment out there, and she was pointing out how many young families there are in that area with small kids and the need to perhaps upgrade some of that park equipment. I'm just, just asking, I don't know if it's, it's a feasible use of that.
What we have found with the restrictions that are on the CDBG funds is, first, they can only be used to replace existing equipment. So we couldn't put new equipment in that park if it wasn't there already, but we can put new equipment in and upgrade it to make it ADA compliant. So that is something that we could take a look at. In fact, we have money left over from our 2018 allocation, which we are in the process of reprogramming, being for ADA accessories at Peaslee Park. So I could take a look at the Balfour Park, we need to have it kind of geared up a year ahead of time, so that when the application comes out in November, by December, we have our plan in place, know what we're going to spend the money on, but I'd be happy to work on that this year for perhaps using the money the following year.
Well, like I said, I, you know, the stuff, I think the play structure that's there, if I'm not mistaken, was moved from the skate park a few years ago, when the one that was there was determined to be unsafe because of termite infestation. So Alex Alley used the, there was one in the skate park, and he had it moved over there. So it's been a long time since anything, you know, new or exciting, if you will, was put in there. And if, if that is, as the resident was saying, there are so many young families in there, then we ought to turn some attention to that for the benefit that that affords the city, so.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
If we can.
We'll take a look at that and see if we can queue it up for the application for next year. We have our ducks in the row, and our approvals from the county, and we have the pricing, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, do we know usage-wise how many of our city residents take advantage of this county home improvement? You know, how many qualify as low-income, and how many are taking advantage of it? And if, if our residents do not take advantage of it, do these funds then just revert for use by residents of other, you know, communities, once this goes into this giant pot at the county?
Yeah, it is not segregated for Huntington Woods residents only, it does go into a giant pot for any resident of Oakland County to use. And there is a report that Home Improvement Program puts out annually that lists the number of residents from each community that uses it, so I can take a look at that and see what happens, what's happened in the past couple of years.
Because if it's not being used, then I wouldn't want to send any, you know, future years, I wouldn't want to send any more money there. I think we should just, you know, try to come up with a project and keep all of it local, unless we see that the program is being utilized by city residents, and there's some benefit to doing so. But with a lot of, you know, our, our HARP program, where the folks can get a lot of stuff done locally by folks, you know, I don't know how many are taking advantage of this, and we're sending 6,500 up there, so I'd rather see it stay here.
These dollars would be used for things like new furnaces and roof repairs that HARP wouldn't, wouldn't cover.
Okay.
So it is a different use.
Great. Yeah, if we could just get usage maybe as like a communication item or something, or just send it to the commission before our next meeting, just so we have it, that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
Great.
Yeah, I'm very uncomfortable in sending money either to Oakland County unless we can document what's going on, especially because we've got the HARP program. I also think in the parks that we could at least put seats and benches, so that those people that cannot stand could at least sit, especially in the summertime, a lot of times families send their grandchildren to their parents. We have a lot of families here where I'm sure the grandparents come if they take them to a park. In many instances, they've got to walk to the other end of the park, which they're not going to do with little kids. So if it's available, I would hope that we can see on, if ADA funding would cover benches and stuff like that, and they could have a multi-purpose kind of value. But I do not agree with sending anything back to the county or the state.
I do want to tell you that Tim and I had long conversations with Oakland County, we had many ideas for use of the funds, and they were all chatted out.
You can't just put a bench in, as you remove a bench that's already there to put an ADA-compliant bench in its place, but you can't just put an ADA-compliant bench.
What if there isn't one there?
Yeah, you can't use it. You can't use it to remove.
Well, that's the most ridiculous thing I have ever heard.
You can't use it to remove a barrier, you can't just put in equipment.
Because of the fact that every community gets an allocation, I would hope that the managers can talk and brainstorm and find out every which way in the county, especially we used to have the managers meeting in the South End, how are they spending their money? And out of that list, you should be able, I, we don't have enough money to run our programs. And even though this is a drop in the bucket, I mean, the amount that we get is ridiculous. But even though I still don't want to, I agree with my two colleagues for once, that I don't want to send money back.
Would it be possible to wait a meeting, to take action, to check statistics on usage to see if this is a program utilized by residents? And if it is, well, then maybe it makes sense that they could continue to utilize it, but if it's not being utilized, then try to scramble and find something?
We have to turn our application on December 19th, and we have scrambled.
Okay.
Can we scramble some more?
I don't think there's enough time to do that. Again, I can't express enough how many avenues we have explored, and how many parks that we have looked at, and how many items at the recreation center we have looked at, and how many items here at City Hall that we have looked at.
Can we, can we call Ed Globitzer at Hazel Park and maybe a couple of other managers and see how they are using the funds to see if in any way?
If they have areas of low income, then there's a much wider.
I understand on the low income.
Right.
We don't have designated areas. What I'm thinking of is if they've used any for disability or barriers. They're not competing against us, so there shouldn't be an issue about telling us how they're spending money.
Well, we do have a December commission meeting prior to the December 19th deadline, our next commission meeting will be December 18th. So, move to table this, do the next, is that, does the day give you enough time to answer to submit this to the county?
Yeah, if you find nothing, I mean, there's, there's, there's no issue here.
I'm double-checking that 19th date to make sure that, actually, they'll do Friday,
December 14th. So we would have to meet prior to the meeting, the 18th?
Meeting is the 18th.
Yeah, we'd have to meet, we have to schedule a meeting prior to that.
I'm at our interview meeting.
Well, if we have something specific to discuss, we can have a special meeting for a few minutes.
The interview meeting is this Monday. I'd be happy to reach out to the county. I'm not optimistic that we're going to get any answers different than what we have already explored with them, but I'd be happy to do that.
So they're the ones that have to approve what our idea is, not, say, like, the feds?
I mean, they're following federal guidelines. But, yeah, the Oakland County ultimately makes that decision of whether or not it's appropriate use of the funds or not.
Well, I just think that I'd rather worry about the parks for now than making the bathrooms in City Hall ADA compliant, but right now, I don't know, but.
Actually, those projects are done.
Okay. Not that it's not important, but the parks are very important.
Okay. We'll put it on hold, schedule a meeting, and plan to meet sometime before the 14th. We actually have to have it in their offices by 5 o'clock on the 14th. Sure.
You need a motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. In the meantime, can you put a list together and distribute it to the commission, or anything that we have tried?
Sure.
So that the county, so we at least are aware of that, and as Commissioner Jex asked, reach out to some other communities to see if anyone else had some good ideas.
As it relates to disability barrier.
Unfortunately, it has to be replacement, it can't be new, it makes it a little more challenging.
I wonder if we move a bench over tonight, now we.
You and I will move it to another park.
We'll put two two-by-fours in the ground with one over top of it, and say, that's an awful-looking bench, we need to replace that.
There's splinters.
That's right, we can come up with something, right?
Okay. Item number two is a matter of consideration of adopting the Oakland County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Every four years, the county updates their hazard mitigation plan and asks the cities to become a, to participate in it, which we always do. And we have updated our portion of the plan to reflect the generator at City Hall and to switch at the recreation center. So their motion is in order to adopt the Oakland County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt the Oakland County Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the public? Any comments at the commission table?
Mr. Mayor, I just would encourage the county to actually follow the plan. You know, when we had the flood in 2014, they didn't even bother to activate their emergency operations center that evening, while most of us in the South End of the county, which they seem to forget about quite a bit, were treading water. So, let's hope they actually follow it in the event that we ever have a unforeseen disaster. No fault on our city administration and our county commissioner, they did an excellent job. You know, I'm talking about the emergency operations folks at the county.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three, a matter of consideration of a cost-sharing agreement regarding, regarding the Southeast Michigan Regional Bike Share Program.
Yes, this is the grant that, uh, multiple communities received to bring the mobile bike sharing program to our area. Uh, there was a cost-sharing with the communities, uh, it was about twenty percent. And the commission had said that they would be interested in pursuing the project if we could get that match covered. And we were able to do that with, uh, donation from the Huntington Woods Men's Club. So what we have for you is a cost-sharing agreement with the city of Ferndale. They will, uh, oversee and administer the grant and then they're asking us to reimburse them for our twenty percent share of the program.
I'd like to move the, uh, recommendation.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission table?
Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, wanna be clear, 'cause I, I've heard from residents on both sides of this issue. And, uh, so we, we are gonna be moving forward this and, and participating, and it's not going to be, um, at any cost to, to the city, right? Because the men's club is going to pick up, um, generously agreeing to pick up, uh, our share of the grant match. And then we're hoping, um, a- as they continue to work out the contractual, uh, details that Health Alliance Plan and, and Henry Ford Hospital, et cetera, are going to extend this agreement to, to cover maintenance costs into the suburbs from, uh, the city.
That's correct. I have a memo from the administrator that said that, uh, they're continuing conversations with title sponsors, Henry Ford and HAP. Uh, it's our goal to have these convers- conversations wrapped up in the framework for an agreement in place by the end of December. I'll be sure to keep you updated on this, so you know if your individual community will need to contribute any annual operating costs. But they're confident that they're gonna be able to do the extension on, on them.
And I think it's a win for everybody, uh, you know, why not offer this program if it's not gonna cost any, uh, tax dollars? So I appreciate the efforts, uh, that everyone put into, uh, bringing this here, but bringing this here at a, at a zero cost to our taxpayers.
Did we determine where we'll put the kiosk? I know we talked about a few places.
Uh, my original suggestion had been, um, you know, at the recreation center. But they also, Mogo was partnering with the U of M Urban Planning graduate students to conduct an analysis for the expansion and where the best destinations will be within the community. So I'd be happy to work with them when they reach out to us.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is a matter of consideration to see enter into a contract with Red Guard Fire and Security of Plymouth to purchase and install a fire alarm system at the library in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the public?
Mr. Mayor, so our, our current alarm system is like a cleaning crew, basically, that happened to notice that the building was about ready to burn down. And fortunately, uh, you know, through the quick response of our public safety department, was able to thwart a fire at the library. Probably not the most effective, uh, alarm system, so, um, but just explain to me why the, uh, the low bidder wasn't, uh, selected because it had to do with like a capacity issue that their system wouldn't work based on the capacity of our library?
So their, the system that they proposed had very few, didn't have any, like, addressable audible detectors. And the fire code, if it's under a hundred people, they're not necessary. But if you're gonna have potentially more than a hundred people in that building to meet the fire code, you have to have addressable detectors.
Works for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is a matter of considering if the city enter into a contract with Advanced Lighting and Sound of Troy, Michigan for the purchase and installation of a castis playback system in amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Right now, our, uh, on our cable channel, all we can show is live programming and the, uh, message board. For instance, Allison participated in some, uh, educational programming and we have those DVDs, but we're unable to show them because of the equipment's just not operating correctly and it's on its last leg. So we are, uh, went out for bids to replace it.
I'll move the cable TV playback system.
Second.
Comment from the public? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is a matter of consideration, the city treasurer be authorized to transfer the city's special assessment rule for unpaid sidewalk assessments to the two thousand and eighteen winter tax roll in accordance with chapter twelve, section twenty-three of the city code.
I would, what, just like to point out that these will be added to the tax roll, but there's no penalty added. So if you, you can either pay your bill when you rece- your invoice when you receive it, or it'll be taxed to your taxes. It's not gonna cost any additional money to add it to the tax roll to the taxpayers. And if your address is on here.
All right.
We'll see if we can take it off tonight if you. It's already done?
There's no advantage, I mean, people who've put it onto their taxes will take it as a tax deduction, even though it's illegal to do. I mean, that's what happens with water and that, that list is growing and growing too.
They've already been added to the tax bills? Okay.
I had to get him to export them in the printer, yeah.
I mean, I'm just surprised at the number of people.
Any comments or questions?
Can I, uh, request that a, uh, property address sort be done? This is a parcel sort, and then it be put up on our website, just so people are aware.
Well, it's already been, uh, sent to the county to be, uh.
Okay.
To be added to the.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
All right, I'll move that, uh, we transfer the, uh, city's special assessment rule for unpaid sidewalk assessments to the two thousand and eighteen winter tax roll for the city of Huntington Woods in accordance with chapter twelve, section twenty-three of the city code.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, a matter of consideration of the release of the restrict, of the restrictive, the covenant, oh, that can't be right. Release of the restriction.
It's a, yeah, it's a restrictive covenant.
Okay. On the west thirteen point six-six feet of lot three seventy-three and all lot three seventy-four, three seventy-five.
You wanna explain?
Uh, yes. The attorney for Huntington Cleaners reached out to Carol, the city attorney. They had discovered during a title search that the city held a revisionary clause on these parcels, which are the ones that are abutting the park behind, um, the dry cleaners. And they have asked the city to release them from that, uh, revisionary clause. We did a lot of research to find out when it went into place, what area was covered, and, um, and also what the value of the property was. We were able to determine that the property is worth ten thousand dollars. It has been partially built on, so I don't envision a scenario where the city will ever use that property sometime in the future, given the fact that there's a dry cleaners on it. So we are re- recommending that the city commission enter into the agreement, uh, for the sum of ten thousand dollars to release that re- revisionary interest on those lots.
Can be used for much else.
No. It's an interesting situation because somewhere along the line, part of our interest was actually expanded onto it, so.
And we, and we permitted it.
It's like the, uh, house, the other house on Eleven Mile, where you have a narrow parcel, it's very hard to try to figure out.
Where, yeah.
What it's, what it's worth.
Right.
Because it's already basically being used for.
Yeah, we kicked it around for a long time, trying to come up with something fair.
It's absolutely right, yeah.
Real emotion?
So moved.
Support.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, this, uh, creates an error of the city of Huntington Woods that was done in nineteen sixty-five and previous.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight is a matter revising the meeting schedule for the city commission meetings in two thousand and nineteen. There are two dates that are being changed. January fifteenth is being changed to the twenty-second. And August sixth is being moved to August twentieth.
Is this different from what we talked about last month?
Those two changes are different than last month.
Oh, okay.
But it's moving.
But it was what we already talked about.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have a motion to, uh, so move?
Second.
Any public comment?
Can I have some attorney comment?
You can.
Yes.
No, I, I sort of raised the issue, um, you know, traditionally, meetings had always started at seven-thirty, but over time, most communities have switched to starting their meetings at seven o'clock, just so they can end earlier. And I just wondered if the commission would, may want to consider that moving forward, switching the schedule to start at seven versus seven-thirty? No? Okay, just my comment. No?
Let me ask you a question. Why?
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 Oh. Something to think about.
I just, we have the city's meetings, we've been through this before. We, this happened a few years ago. A request was made to change either, I forgot what, to make it later, I think. And, uh, it was pointed out that every meeting in Huntington Woods, just about every different group, everything starts at seven-thirty.
Except I don't think they do anymore. They start at seven.
All the.
Yeah, they're switching over to seven.
Three-thirty.
So, just something to think about.
We went through this, we had a long discussion about this, and I think we, you know, we, I mean, our meetings, uh, candidly, don't go unduly long for the most part, for the most part. And, uh, so I don't really see that as a good issue. Got a problem there, Commissioner Rosell?
No, no, sometimes commissioners get long-winded, you know?
Yes, that's right.
It could prolong a meeting, just hypothetically, but, uh.
Well, that's great. Yeah, if it starts earlier, I can speak longer.
Right, right. Another reason, or another reason for denying that motion.
I'll go to, I'll go to.
Tell you what, we can make a motion that Mr. Janks could be here at seven and start talking before everybody.
There you go.
I knew you would object because I'd make motions, you guys would be absent, be unanimous, I'd say.
I'm sorry, uh, I know it's sort of not exactly open to the public, but since I'm the only public here, I think I'll say something. I, I would really urge the commission to stay with seven-thirty. I know that a lot of the committees have been moving around seven-thirty. If people are coming home from work and need to get something, if there are occasionally going to be people here besides myself, uh, I think seven-thirty is a reasonable time for those people, and the seven crushes the timeframe work. And I would hate to see us creating an environment where it's more difficult for the public, even though often the public doesn't show up. But occasionally, they do to come, so in deference to our attorney, um, I, I like the time at seven-thirty, so.
Go to bed earlier, but it's okay.
Well, we don't run meetings.
I guess I'm getting old.
Only you can, only you can.
I know, I must be getting old.
Okay, we do have a, uh, motion on the floor to change the two dates of the, uh. So move.
You guys are good.
Oh, we have a motion. We just need to vote on that. Is there any other comments or questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine is to set a special meeting date for, uh, for meeting, um, with the city commission to interview candidates for boards, commissions, and committees. We have, uh, reached a date that everyone was available on Monday, November twenty-sixth, beginning at six-thirty. We currently have four or five, uh, interviews scheduled.
We have eight citizen interest forums for residents. You're already familiar with they, uh, have served on board previously and you've interviewed them previously. So we're trying to schedule four for Monday night. We've been able, been able to reach three. So, uh, we're hoping we can get the fourth one. So I am also putting in the eBlast of rerunning the article saying that we need more residents, 'cause we don't have enough for all the, um, vacancies. So we may be meeting again before the December meeting, but at least it won't be as long, because you have not, uh, hopefully four of them out of the way on Monday.
Well, I think the original eBlast said that we wanted applications by November thirtieth, so it would be constructive to let people know that we want them before the twenty-sixth.
Well, actually, we'll, we'll take them whenever we can get them. I mean, even if we have to point people in January, you know, we could still do that. So I'm not gonna necessarily put a deadline on it. I am gonna push it out now, so hopefully that'll encourage people to apply now.
We do have eighteen openings, so, uh, there's a very good possibility that we'll end up scheduling another, uh, session to interview. But in the meantime, we can get started and interview some of the people that have put in their applications. Certainly, we can all encourage people to, uh, to put in an application as soon as possible.
How many interviews do we have, Sam?
Three, we're working on four. Now, we have eight applications altogether, we're just not gonna schedule the individuals that you're already familiar with.
Okay.
But Bob, you said eighteen openings?
We do, yes.
So we're looking at starting at six-thirty and then, and then doing three to four interviews?
I think it's six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Yeah. I think the first interview is at six forty-five, we said, let's just set up at six-thirty, so everybody will be here and, you know.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Any more motion?
Did we determine where we'll be meeting? I know there's a planning commission, uh, meeting that night.
Is it okay if we put you in the lunchroom back here? I mean, it's a big table, there's plenty of room. Is that okay?
Will there be food there, too?
It's up to you guys, Sam.
Yeah, great.
Just leftovers.
Raise the refrigerator.
City Hall, special meeting at six-thirty on Monday, November twenty-sixth. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have four sets of reports in minutes. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Yes.
Commissioner, on the, uh, senior housing study, it seems to, uh, really have changed so that we will now have not a mixed-use kind of, uh, facility, but a senior housing facility, and it may take, uh, land from other places to move City Hall other places. Instead of taking advantage of what we have in the way of land space, this seems like it will take away, uh, recreation. It, uh, if you move senior housing to the middle of the city as it relates to public transportation, it makes it harder as opposed to eleven-mile road, um.
Uh, maybe I didn't write the minutes clearly. We are looking at a possible facility on Eleven Mile Road using the land that City Hall Public Safety, the Parks Building, and DPW currently sit, uh, turn that into a facility.
And then you would move those facilities either to some other place in the city or someplace away from the city?
Only Department of Public Works would probably, would need to move out of the city, the, the City Hall.
So they would be removed from the city?
This is in concept only, but yes, in order to gain enough space to create a viable development, uh, we're looking at the possibility of city offices and public safety remaining on. on-site with housing for seniors and looking into what opportunities we have to place the DPW off-site, but obviously nearby, so we can have access to DPW.
I just think, uh, that one is off, uh, sort of moving off-base. And on, uh, the senior advisory committee, I'm not listed as excused. I think I have requested to be excused. I attended the Michigan Municipal League Convention, which was in Grand Rapids, and I'd like that to be reflected.
I can take care of that.
So do we have a motion to, uh, to receive? So move and file. Actually, we have that, I'm sorry. It's already, um, been made. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So you'll take the minutes back to the senior advisory committee and have that, uh, that change made and then re-present them to us?
I think I'm just going to advise them that it was inadvertently left out. It doesn't substantially change anything.
Okay. Item number eleven, or number three forty-four, do we have a motion to, uh, approve subject to full audit? So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Just a couple of comments. I have a note that the city clerk would like to thank the election inspectors, City Hall staff, Steve W. and Alex from the Recreation Department for a successful November sixth election. And then a reminder that, uh, the used book sale is coming up this, uh, it's December, December first, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday. Uh, but, uh, our offices will be closed this weekend for Thanksgiving holiday. City Hall's closed Thursday, Friday, and all the recreation libraries are closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Uh, but you can access the city newsletter online. It'll be mailed out the week of November twenty-sixth, if you want to get a jump on the classes and activities. And also, uh, we send out a publication aimed at our seniors called the Leisure Forum. It's actually getting a name change. It's turning into the, the plus, the sixty-plus forum. Uh, it is mailed to all the homes, but it is also available online for any seniors that want to take a look at trip events and programming that are, are coming up. So we may be closed, but you can still, uh, sign up for programming, do the recreation center online, and that's it.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you very much. Commissioner's remarks. Mr. Oldman.
So wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Commissioner Roselle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank our city clerk and our election workers for a job well done with November's election. Uh, we did beat Pleasant Ridge with eighty percent turnout in Huntington Woods, second only to, in our county anyway, to the city of Lake Angeles. Now, they only have three people, three hundred people. Seems like three, right?
Two hundred and sixty registered voters, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, uh, so it's very difficult to beat, uh, Lake Angeles, uh, being such a small, um, community. But eighty percent is something to really be proud of, and our citizens are very civically engaged. And so we continue to lead with turnout and, uh, so be the recipient of that, uh, grant money, uh, that Mr. Pernick, uh, so thoughtfully put up. And, um, also want to thank, uh, uh, like I said, uh, the city administration and our clerk for a job well done, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
I did want to note that the city of Northville's turnout was seventy-five percent. So there's, there's more than one competition.
Well, but seventy-five is not seventy-nine point six.
No, it's not.
Seventy-nine point, seventy-nine point nine-nine-six.
There was more than one competition going on.
Mr. Jenks?
Uh, I need to ask the Rio County head of donors, how did we stand statewide? Did you have a chance to look?
Uh, the...
Because historically, we've been...
Yeah, pretty high. Uh, our, our turnout just anecdotally is higher, uh, than most counties, but, uh, our certification, uh, was just completed, so we don't, we haven't reported our certified totals yet. So, uh, we'll know in the next couple days where we officially stand, but I can tell you, we're definitely in the top tier of Michigan's eighty-three counties.
Well, if you're smart, you vote. And in Huntington Woods, people are smart and they vote and have a wonderful Thanksgiving. But, uh, also think about, uh, the people that aren't having such a great Thanksgiving. And if you can share with them, uh, please do it. Today, we helped distribute, uh, ten turkeys along with groceries for families of five that would last for four days. Uh, food stamps really doesn't allow for celebrations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Rosell?
Just, uh, wish everyone safe travels tomorrow, a busy day, and, uh, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to echo a lot of the comments that we've already heard and thank the community, not only for coming out and voting, but for their overwhelming support of our infrastructure investment. And, uh, wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. At that, the meeting is adjourned.